Please access the video conference link on the agenda even if you do not have a webcam in order to fully participate. Attending the meeting tonight are four of members of the planning board. Also joining us are the Director of Land Use Management, Jeffrey Morissette, Assistant Town Planner, Sierra Pelletier. Mike Wells is assisting with the IT functions and pulling up relevant plans and documents. And we are additionally joined by Town Engineer Paul Sterrett tonight. With that, we have two public hearing items, four general business items, and a review of some minutes. But as always, we will start tonight by going to open forum. Go to town staff. Jeff, anything from town staff for open forum tonight?
Nothing from me, Mr. Chair.
Paul, any items?
Just a continue reminder about the construction on Oak Hill Road. And we will have a paving schedule coming out pretty soon as well, so we can anticipate some traffic advisories there.
Great. Yeah, it's a lot of work's been done over there. That's close to my house. I've been on that roadway there. Obviously, a lot of work has obviously clearly already been done.
Moving right along, very happy with the contractor.
Members of the board, any items? It looks like Kate, you have an item for open forum?
Yeah, for pedestrian safety committee. We had high school students. We gave them some ideas for posters, and a bunch of them created some nice posters from our word, and we selected one just for safety considerations for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. And it is posted on, I believe, the police website. I don't have the URL with me, but I believe that's where it is. And we are also reviewing whether or not we want to recommend that the town adopt this new state rule or possibility to have a 25 mile an hour zone for the town or for selected streets. So that's what we're working on right now.
Great. Thank you for the update. Mike or Bob, any other items for open forum before we begin?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. All right, great. With, oh, I guess, are there anybody from the public want to contribute anything to open forum? Take a look. I don't see any questions out there. All right. Hearing no one chiming in, let's move on to the the public hearing items. So the first one is PB 2102 subdivision plan, stormwater management permit, and all the associated trappings. So Jeff, we were going to hear this item tonight, but my understanding is the applicant has requested postponement today, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So as you know, we have been working on the three draft decisions for the board's consideration, but we did not receive the most recent revised plans until the middle of last week. And so we have not had a chance to incorporate that, review those, and make the necessary changes. So the applicant agreed to work with us, have back and forth well in advance of your next meeting. So they've requested continuance without discussion to the August 16th meeting, I believe.
Great. All right. Well, given that, is there a motion to continue PB 2102 to the 16th of August meeting?
Some move. Second.
Starting at 7:30, and I assume at Town Hall.
Yep. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay, the next public hearing item is PB 2130, limited site plan review and stormwater management permit for 33 Robinson Road, being Robinson School. The applicant has requested postponement without discussion to the August 16th meeting as well. Is there a motion to do so?
Some move.
Some, second.
Again, friendly amendment to our meeting starting at 7:30 at Town Hall.
Yes. All right. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right. With our public hearing items out of the way, we move on to our general business topics. General business item A is, I guess, looks like four roads that are, well, I guess, I'll go to town staff. It looks like the residents are looking to have these roads considered for acceptance at an upcoming town meeting, Jeff?
So, Mr. Chair, I think we should turn this over to our town engineer, who's been working with those groups of residents, and that he can get clearly and simply give you an overview.
Great. Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and Jeff, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. So as you can see from the memo, this is really a informational, high-level feedback conversation this evening, so that I can continue to work with the residents on the four subject roads, Burn Place Extension, Grove Street, Lake Shore Drive South, a portion of Lake Shore Drive South, and Old Wood Road. The residents individually, these roads, had approached me about betterments and getting their roads improved. And I met with each road separately and explained to them the process, and told them that a critical first step is to get into the planning board to learn from you if there are any specifics that you want incorporated into the betterments. Because eventually, as a part of the process for street acceptance, once the betterment is complete, we'll go to the select board and ask to be on the warrant, and the select board will say, yes, but we want a non-binding recommendation from the planning board, and I will come back to you. And so we didn't want to come back to you and get surprised. So we thought we'd make sure that we had our Ts crossed, because these residents will need to work with me to get their plans prepared to go to town meeting, to get the betterment approved by town meeting. And once we secure those funds, we can start the design process to make sure that every, so we have construction plans, so that they can, the roads can then be constructed correctly in accordance with the plans. And when that's all completed, so right now, we need to know what your expectations are so that I can prepare an estimate for the residents to consider. And then we'll know whether or not they'll be able to agree to the financial responsibilities that a betterment brings to each of the residents. And then we'll go to town meeting, get that money, and we'll be back before the board again. So you get a couple bites of this apple while, just as a courtesy, show you the plans that we're going to construct. And then, of course, you'll have your other moment when the select board solicits your recommendation. So the big issues on these older roads that have been unaccepted, and each one has their own story. These are so old that I'm not familiar with those stories. You know, there are reasons that each one of them were not accepted at the time. But now, modern-day residents are asking for them to be accepted, and of course, that leads us to the betterment process. So the recommendation I've included in my memo is that we maintain the existing condition, which is a gravel and gravel road in all of these cases. And after my measurements and after talking with the fire department, they're always a critical component in road widths. Our deputy fire chief understood the constraints that we'd have to do eminent domain takings to take land, we'd have to compensate for that. There are a lot of complications if we wanted to make these roads wider than they currently are today. But they, as I've explained, that's how they exist today. The one exception on Old Wood Road, which is a little bit windy, more than the other ones, which are all straight, he, the deputy chief, asked if we could look for opportunities to either straighten it out a little bit or widen it to 18 feet. And that may include some shoulder work as well. And then finally, of course, we have a responsibility to look at the stormwater and do everything we can to the maximum extent possible to address stormwater runoff. So that would be our hope this evening on behalf of the residents, to get some acknowledgement from you guys that we're headed in the right direction with our wants and needs on these betterments. And then we'll prepare an estimate and get to the select board.
Thank you for that overview. All right. So I guess at this point, you're just looking for general feedback from the board on, I guess, the approach, and if we have any specific comments about any of the roads in question.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful.
Okay, great. So let's go to the board. I guess I'll start with, I guess I'll go in order. Kate, do you have any feedback on the process, or do you know the roads in question?
I was looking at it on the town GIS map, and one thing that I noticed was that the layout seemed to be a little bit different from the maps that were provided in our packet, that there are fewer homes on each. And it seemed as though, like, for Burn Place, and I can't read the second one, that there may be only, like, four houses on the section of street that you're talking about, Grove Street. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. And so if that's true, then I can appreciate keeping the roads the same width that they are, rather than forcing four houses or so to have to widen the road just for that little section. The Old Wood, one of them went out to Nab Road.
That's Grove Street.
The Grove. I was concerned about that, the potential for it being a through street, being used as a cut-through, and what effect that would have. But again, if you look on the town GIS map, it's not as many houses as shown on this page here.
Yeah, these are all the ancient, back in the '30s, the old cottage lot plans that were put together. And I will, I mean, as you know from the rule of squares, the hypotenuse is always the shortest part, so I do not anticipate anyone using Grove Street as a shortcut. But especially being 16 feet wide, it'll be less attractive. So that, and that hasn't, that did not come up with any of the residents that we spoke with, but...
Okay. And the Lake Shore Drive South, I wasn't sure, is it just a short section at the end that you are saying would be, is not currently
Correct.
accepted road?
Yeah. A good portion of Grove Street is accepted, and then there's the section that we're, that's gravel that we're talking about tonight that's unaccepted. There's a good portion of Lake Shore South, Lake Shore Drive South, that's accepted, but there was a small portion at the end. Now, to be clear, the resident, or I believe residents, at the very end, at this point, at this time, just don't want to participate in the betterment. And I, we appreciate that. There are some people in town that just like their gravel roads and like everything about them. So it would not go the full length of Lake Shore South, but those are the plans that you'll see later on, if it goes forward, to show you the full extent of the work. And then, of course, we have to have street acceptance plans. That will be meets and bounds described by a surveyor, so all that will be in order.
Okay, and then the last one, Old Woods, Old Wood Road, it's, looking at it on the GIS, it looked as though it was an okay width for most of this section. Again, it's not the whole road, just like the very end of it, it looks like.
Yeah.
And that, there is a part at the end where it narrows down. And if I read your memo correctly, the safety, fire, or police is recommending that that part have some work done to it, to maybe either widen it or reroute it or such.
Yeah, we could, we think that we can get 18 feet in there if it's necessary, but we are going to look for an opportunity just to straighten out the alignment. That's the, it's the twisting and the turning that is problematic. But I told the deputy that we would, we will, we're going to need their support at town meeting, so we told them we'll accommodate all of their vehicles on all their roads. And I wouldn't go out to Old Lowell or Lake Shore South right now. They are just about impassable with the water that we've had. And we will need to do some stormwater management. Does look like there are opportunities to accomplish that, but we got to get to the design phase before we know that for sure.
Okay. But other than that, it didn't look like any showstoppers, and it looked as though the work could all be done within the existing road easement.
Correct.
Which is, which is good. So that's all of my comments.
Thanks, Kate. Mike, any comments?
Well, you know what? I think Paul, that the fire department wouldn't need to worry about Old Wood Road. I think they have a fire system right in the middle of it.
Exactly right.
So I'm very familiar with all of these roads. This is, as you know, where I live. So if the residents are for it, then I am all for it.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mike. Bob?
Yeah, so Kate addressed most of it. The one thing, question I had was, so in this area of Nab Nasset, are there any other roads left that have not been accepted at this time?
Yes, there are, and there, none of which are, these were actually spontaneous, for the record. I didn't, I do not go out and solicit roads for betterments. It's not a small amount of work, and it's, you know, it will get it done, but the ones that are remaining, I don't think would ever be candidates for acceptance. The one I'm particularly thinking of, the residents have made it very clear that they like their narrow country gravel road, and they maintain it, and they take care of it. But this will be a good collection of our orphaned roads out in Nab Nasset, and it will be good to get them into the town's inventory, because these residents are dealing with nightmares that I can only imagine with their roads in the winter and so forth. So they have to take care of all these things, but if they're, once they're accepted, of course, then they just become a tiny fraction of the roads that we maintain now. But none, none that are missing from the list that we, that should probably be a part of this.
Okay, no, that's all I have. Thank you.
And it is an interesting point. You see them grouped here together. I did that for the convenience of the residents who might want to listen in and then not have to do three or four different meetings on this subject. So I grouped them together, but they will all rise or fall on their own individually, and that will be part of the process.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Bob. So Paul, I mean, I have no concerns with the approach. I think, you know, the way you're handling it is perfect, and I'm interested to see where this goes. I am not probably as familiar as Mike, but this is my neighborhood, and I'm pretty familiar with all of these roads, least of so Grove Road. But the Burn Place, that is the road that, at least it did have a, I mean, what can only be described, sort of a pothole large enough to consume a small, compact car, right? I mean, it really, it turned into a small pond when it would rain heavily. Am I remembering that right?
You might be able to get a mid-sized car in that.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
Mr. Chair, if I could, during our construction project out on Oak Hill Road, we were working, of course, in front of the Nab Fire Station, and the chief, chief and the director of Public Works reasoned that that could be an important route for emergency vehicles during construction, and the fire trucks were not going to get up there. The ambulance, for sure, was not getting up there. So the chief did ask, and the director of Public Works did comply, to grade out the road and put in some gravel to make it passable for the interim. Because this, if this goes forward, then we will go to the October town meeting for the betterment, and then over the winter, reduce it to design plans and bid documents and not doing it until April. And that would be far too long to do that. Grove Street, actually, we were ready to do the same thing on Grove Street, but before we could get out there, they had made their own repairs. In fact, we were headed out there that same day, and we were told, it's nothing wrong here, it's been all graded out, it's fine, so.
Interesting. Yeah, I mean, it'll be interesting to see if you can get to that 16 feet on Burn Place. Obviously, I haven't been there, you know, I didn't go there after reading the packet, but my recollection is that's a, it's a narrower roadway than some of the other, I mean, all of those streets in that neighborhood are quite narrow, but that one's even, I think, even more narrow than some of the others. But certainly, I think it would be great if that, if that street could be, you know, brought up to a better standard, because I know that's got to be problematic for those folks in bad weather. Yeah. One quick question, any concerns, you know, you said the intention is to keep them all, you know, as gravel roads. Does that introduce any challenges with regard to snow removal and things like that to any of the, maybe, like, abutting roads that are not gravel?
Yeah, and pardon the confusion, Mr. Chair, we're not, they're gravel now, we're going to pave them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we would never get through a town meeting, street acceptance, with an unpaved road.
Okay, thank you.
So that's what we'll do.
Okay, okay.
When we get to the design stage, that's when we'll find out, you know, what kind of drainage can, is necessary in need of once we put down the pavement, you know, berms, if necessary, or can we do country drainage? We'll get into all those details in the design.
Okay, great. If the intention is to pave them all, then I agree. I think that would be great if the, if the residents are willing. I think it would be a great improvement for the overall neighborhood.
Well, that's helpful to me, and I know this is a conversation without a vote, but my understanding is that if I were to, if we, the residents and myself, come back here with 16-foot, with Old Road, Old Wood Road being something we'll look more closely at, then that's something that the board would likely be able to support and recommendation.
Yes.
I, just a clarification thing, when other roads have come before us, it was the people on the street who brought them up. So these streets here are kind of fuzzy because they're pre-subdivision rules and regulations. So Paul, are you saying that the town would do the work to bring them up?
No, we would, they'll still be betterments. You know, it is, the, the ask is for a betterment, and that's the policy of the select board when these unaccepted roads come forward. You, in the past, I've, I think that I've brought 16 roads during my tenure, which is, oh, that's convenient, that's like one a year. But this will get us up to a nice round 20, I think, that we've done. But most of the other ones were abandoned subdivisions with developers who walked away or were not interested in following the very arduous process that we have to go through for street acceptance, just left bond money on the tables and things like that. That's not the case with any of these roads. These roads were just never brought through the street acceptance process. So that's what we'll do, Mr. Chair, if there's no other conversation. I mean, you can go to the public. I know that some of the residents on these roads, I gave them the link, and they might be listening in. But otherwise, we'll be back with more information as this moves forward. I'll keep you updated.
Great. We'll look forward to the updates. And yeah, yeah, I mean, I think to your last point, Paul, I think, you know, it sounds like you have a, you know, a board that's generally in favor of seeing these improvements and these betterments done. So that's all good. I guess to that end, we can look and see if any members of the audience would have information they want to share relevant to the discussion. I don't see anything in the Q and A section.
I'm not seeing any hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Yep, all right. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
He's not going anywhere, because he's here for the next one, too. All right, so we'll move on to our next general business item, which is PB 1801, a request to release remaining subdivision bond held for Hummingbird Lane.
Mr. Chair, will you recuse myself?
All right, Mike? Okay, so I guess, Jeff, do you have anything for us to sort of kick us off here?
Sure, Mr. Chair, thank you. As you may recall, the board previously released, did a partial release of the bond or surety to guarantee completion of the construction of Hummingbird Lane. The applicant has been working with the engineering department to provide their certification and final as-built. The applicant's engineer has certified that they believe they've completed the project in substantial accordance with the subdivision plan and the board's, the pavement improvement plan as well. I know the applicant's engineer should be available tonight to answer any specific questions. I believe there's approximately just over $43,000 left in the surety. The applicant has requested that all remaining surety be released to them. The two lot owners, the other two lot owners in Hummingbird Lane, they oppose any release.
William Haddad, I'm not sure if that is the engineer?
No.
Matt Hammer, okay, he just raised his hand as well. I'm going to unmute him. Okay, Matt?
Yes, good evening. Can everyone, oh, sorry.
We hear you.
Okay, great. Matt Hammer, Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, we're the, you know, we've been involved in this project all along, as I believe most of the board members know. To give you an update, last November, we were on-site during the paving of this project. It was closely monitored by ourselves, other various consultants that were hired, and the pavement was installed per the pavement improvement plan, if we want to call it that, that was, that was cycled through the town. We believe that that plan was adhered to, falls within the proximity of what that plan showed. We've gone out and as-built the final pavement, and that's representative of our most recent as-built plan that was provided to the town dated 5 June 8th of 2021. And we believe that the site has been constructed per that plan in a satisfactory on our end. And I can answer any calls, questions that the board may have.
Great, thank you for that overview. I guess, I guess let's go to the board. So Kate, do you have any specific questions of the applicant? I do want to go to Town Engineering at some point, but I figured I would maybe go to any board questions for the applicant first.
No, I, I look forward to hearing what Engineering and other town staff have to say.
Gotcha. Bob, anything from you before we go to Town Engineering?
No, again, I'm looking forward to Engineering, and I do have some questions that I will re-raise, because I did talk to them earlier today.
Oh, okay, great. Well, then, Paul, without any hesitation, let's, let's go to your feedback on the applicant's position that the roadway's been constructed sort of per the design plan.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. And I can concur with the representation by the developer's engineer, Matt Hammer, and his comments tonight, and more importantly, the comments that are certified to us from the design engineer, Robin and Gil, who has said essentially the same thing as Matt, that everything has been constructed as designed. I cannot present to you any evidence tonight that the road is not doing everything that you would want a road to do in the town of Westford in terms of the drainage. I've witnessed that myself on multiple occasions, multiple weather events, including, most recently, in the last couple of weeks, we went out including most recently in the last couple of weeks, we went out and did some video photography. If anyone in the board's interested in seeing that, that's available. So I can't I I'm not aware of any reason to to not release the bond. So the engineering department recommends releasing the surety for the project in the full amount.
Okay. Speaking personally, I would definitely be interested in seeing the the video that you took during that storm event. If you're talking about the the heavy one there, that was was that a Saturday or a Sunday when that came through?
Yeah, not these are not Saturday or Sunday events, but they're this, of course, pick a day, any day in the month of July. And we've had super saturated grounds flooding everywhere all over town. But everything was performing as was designed by the engineer on the project.
So you didn't witness, you know, major sheeting of rain coming down Hummingbird and running straight across Lawson Road? That wasn't wasn't what you observed?
No, nor nor was it recorded in the video that way. There is there is a an amount of runoff that, of course, remember, even before this project was before the board, there was always a driveway on Hummingbird, but without the benefit of a decision or a storm water management permit, which has added to the property, you know, an infiltration system, a four bay, a detention pond, a a catch basin, a swale, infiltration swale on the side of the road. So this one would be shocked to find that with all of those additions to to the property, that there wouldn't be good performance. And that's but that's what we've seen out there.
Interesting. Okay, great.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I do have the the video I can try to share. It's about a minute long. And there's another one that that's also about a minute long taken by our department.
What's the pleasure of the board? Would the board like to do a one minute video?
Definitely would like to see it. Yes.
Okay, just bear with me a moment, and I will figure out how to screen share this.
While you're working on that, Kate or Bob, maybe if you before the video comes up, do you have any questions for for Paul and what he just went over with us?
Well, I I want to revisit. I did send a well, I guess here's the video. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you ready to play?
Yeah.
That was Lawson Road you were looking at there. To the left is Hummingbird. The brown silty materials obviously not coming from our project, are from the project at Hummingbird that you approved, but from the road itself.
Where was that that you were just pointing to?
He's he's standing at the bottom of Hummingbird where it reaches Lawson Road.
Yeah, when you saw the highway vehicle, that was on law that was right on Hummingbird.
This is the driveway adjacent to Hummingbird. That doesn't have the benefit of any storm water BMPs. This is across the street.
I would dare say that the driveway seems to be putting more water onto Lawson Road than Hummingbird.
Yeah, that would be accurate, Mr. Chair. And we've already had testimony from another resident that lives on Lawson Road that it's always flooded. But that's just historic fact that, you know, we've we've had this runoff. So there's so if I could find something on Hummingbird to point to and say, you know, that's that runoff is coming from this project, I you would certainly know about that. But wasn't evident it's never been evident to my witness or to the video you just saw. And I think Jeff even took another one. That was from my the first one was from my my department.
Would you like me to share the second video?
Sure.
Thanks. And again, bear with me a moment.
Are we setting firsts tonight? Is this the first time we've had a video interactive planning board event? This is exciting.
A different date and a different person filming. I believe Jeff took this video.
So to be clear here, so we make sure we are observing what I think we're observing, Paul, is I am seeing an excessive amount of runoff in front of Hummingbird on Lawson, but it does not appear to be coming down Hummingbird. It appears to be running along Lawson. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, in order for it to get off in the engineer of the project can speak to this better than me. But in order for it to get off of Hummingbird, it would have to get by the infiltration system, the four bay, the detention pond, the catch basin, and the stormwater swale that's constructed. That's why you don't see any runoff. But you don't have those BMPs or best management practices on Lawson Road or in the on the driveways abutting Lawson Road. So you get runoff from them, but it's expected. That's that's what happens.
Right.
An improved surface.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that that's in the record tonight, that that's what we're observing. Because somebody could at first blush claim that that runoff in front of Hummingbird is from Hummingbird, but that's not what we're observing.
Now, in the in the first video, too, I think the one that Paul shot, when he it's early in the video, when you see the water moving, it's actually moving along Lawson. It's it's not moving in the direction it would be moving if it was coming down Hummingbird.
That's how I would characterize it.
And that was also evident in the second video that it was coming from the west side of Lawson?
So if you were standing at the bottom of Hummingbird, you're saying off to the right, right? It would be coming.
It was coming from no, sorry, east side coming. It was coming from the left down on along the other side of Lawson Road. And and I do feel sorry. I appreciate the concern of that the family that lives at that house, because it does look as though the runoff rut has expanded in the in the last few years. But again, it was there before, as I recall. It just seems more noticeable now.
So this might be a good point, Dylan. I did have an email interaction with Paul earlier today because I I read the packet. I appreciated Paul had reviewed all of the materials we saw in the packet, with the exception of the late submittal of the letter from Mr. Beers. And hopefully I'm pronouncing that right. So I just wanted to ask, because Mr. Beers had made an observation that the infiltrate infiltration trenches weren't being properly maintained. And so the question is, is one, are they being properly maintained? Or is there any evidence that they're not operating properly? And understand, and I also just wanted to understand Paul's insights on this, because I was aware they had been out to visit the site in some of our recent heavy rain events, which provided for the perfect lab to make that assessment. So Paul, if you would, he Paul did share with me the operation and maintenance document for this. That is something I'm not aware I had seen before because I wasn't on the planning board at that time. But Paul, maybe now might be a place where you can make your statement that you you stated to me as well.
Yeah, more specifically, that this is what what did I you'll have to remind me of the conversation.
More specifically, you simply stated that the infiltration trench was performing as was expected, and there was no evidence that it was not properly maintained as as evidenced by the fact that it was operating very admirably, I guess, is the way to put it.
Correct. Not to not to be too pragmatic, but, you know, if it's if it was not working, we would know because that video would have looked very differently. But again, the designer is here, so they can speak to that as well. But they do have their operation and maintenance responsibilities. As you know, the planning, the planning board agreed with the engineering department years ago when we first developed our storm water management permit, that these documents should be recorded so that they go with the property. And so landowners later on can't say we didn't know about this, or this responsibility. And that's all detailed of what they're supposed to do. But the developer or the engineer can speak as to whether or not they've done those. It's a private road. So we are not out there inspecting these things ourselves. That's clearly the homeowner's responsibility as stated in the O and M document recorded at Mill 6 North in Lowell.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Are there any other comments from the board this evening?
None from me.
Yeah, me as well. I think I've seen what I need to see. So so Sierra, there's a number of people with hands up right now. I see Mr. Hammer is still has his hand. I don't know if that was.
I actually I did have one more question, Dylan.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Just I just wanted to be clear here because we're talking about stations 2 plus 2.5 to 6 plus 0.0 for the bond release, since 0.0 to 2 plus 2.5 has already been released. Is that a correct statement to Paul and Jeff and Sierra?
That is my recollection. When the board did a partial release, it was from the beginning. I thought it was to around approximately station 2 plus 25 because that was the portion of the roadway that had been around longer had been through, I believe, at least that one freeze thaw cycle to see if there was any obvious defects. So it was for the beginning portion of the roadway. So the draft language that you saw in front of you tonight, it was simply to represent the entirety of the roadway for all the remaining shorties. But you are correct. The prior release is for the beginning portion.
I don't think it's necessarily critical, but when we talk about this, just help me understand because it looks like the infiltration basin may be down in the lower portion and the four bay is up in the the proportion higher than 2 plus 2.5. Do we have to be concerned with that in any manner? How does that work in terms of what's released when?
So at this point, I don't think the specifics matter because the applicant is seeking the release of any remaining monies. And if the board finds that it's inappropriate to do so, they can retain whatever portion makes sense if there's something that they believe is as yet unresolved.
Okay. I'm good, Dylan. I'm fine. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. So Sierra, I see three folks with their hands up. I guess Mr. Hadad, I guess, had his hand up first. Maybe we can go to him.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Will Hadad. My partner, Dan Pascarello, and I represent the Buches, which are property owners, one of the three property owners in the on the road there. Mr. Pascarello was not able to make it tonight due to the short notice for this meeting, and has been taking the laboring oar on this. And and for that reason, we would request a continuance or an adjournment. However, to the extent that the board decides to move forward on the petition, we would oppose it on a number of grounds, including those submitted in our letter today, July 19 to the board. There are numerous deficiencies that still exist, failure to stabilize the right side of the roadway, failure to properly back up edges of the roadway and the berms, cracking on the edges of the roadway due to areas not having proper backing, damage to the finished pavement on top of the T turnaround caused when the Campbell's dumped several tons of stone without taking precautions, weeds, still hay waddles and soap fencing along various parts of the roadway and down trays around the left side. So it's not just limited to the issue of runoff. There's a number of deficiencies that are still out there that we believe mean that the the board, to the extent makes a decision, should not allow the release of the money. We also join in the opposition for the other landowner, the Maripolskis. Mr. Timman, I believe, is also on the call and will speak to that. And finally, to the extent that the board does decide to release any of the surety money, we would ask that it be released to the Buches per the attachment to our letter, which is the agreement between the parties, which permits the release to a party who's when the other side hasn't cured. So I defer to Mr. Timman for further comment. We join in his arguments, but that's those are our positions.
Great, thank you. All right. So I guess we should go to Mr. Timman perhaps next then, Sierra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ben Timman, I represent the Maripolskis. Nice to see you again this evening after a long pause in this particular case. I wanted to touch first on the on the issue of the short notice. This really isn't a small thing. And the vote of this board respectfully really should be put over until August. Ms. Campbell filed her application, Mr. and Mrs. Campbell filed filed their application for this bond release on July 14. And it was put on the agenda the next day, which is the first day, Thursday, the 15th, that my clients learned about this and I learned about it. And I believe Attorney Pascarello learned about it that day as well. Having been on the receiving end a number of times during the course of this whole process of a quite rigid application of the board's rules regarding the submission of materials in advance of meetings, I I fail to understand how this is was able to get on the agenda with a single day's notice. And it's put those who oppose this bond release at a real disadvantage. We've had to scramble to pull together some letters. We haven't been able to get our engineers pulled together on time. My clients aren't able aren't here, then weren't able to attend. Mr. Attorney Pascarello, as his colleague Attorney Hadad just said, wasn't able to attend. So this isn't a small thing. I think this is, as you know, an important issue that's been before the board in one form or another for, you know, about two years. And there's a lot of technical aspects to to go through regarding specification on compliances. To my understanding, the form, there's no updated Form G that I've seen in the papers that even ticks through the particulars of of why the bond release is justified on a point by point basis. So I'd like to start there and just urge the board to to put this over so that there can be a fair opportunity for all interested parties to participate in this. With respect to the stormwater flows, I watched the videos like you did. It's unclear to me, you know, exactly what levels of precipitation was occurring in those videos and when and when they occurred. What I do know is that those videos and the observations that Mr. Starrett has relayed aren't consistent with eyewitness testimony of of the residents. I'm not sure whether Mr. Beers has his hand up or not in this proceeding. But I believe that if if he's present, which I understand he will be, he he probably has a quite different description of some of the heavier rain events. I just received today a copy of a letter from a resident of 24 Lawson Road. I don't know this gentleman. I don't know whether he is on the call either, but he submitted a letter. I don't think it's in your packets. I didn't see it in the board packet, but I may have missed it. But it was a letter addressed to your predecessor chairman, chairman with in April of 2021, in which he gives a very detailed this is from a Jose Martin, 24 Lawson Road. He gives a very detailed account of what he describes as, for example, "At the moment, following every significant rainfall, the water flows in torrents unimpeded across the properties of our neighbors on Lawson Road and directly into Lake Nibnasset." And then he goes on to talk about the, you know, the seemingly non-existent maintenance that's occurring up on Hummingbird Lane, which I think it certainly is consistent with with the evidence that the there really hasn't been maintenance of the storm drain, which is often clogged with debris, and other aspects of the O and M plan that have not been met. So I think I would leave it to others to give their description of the of the flows, but I don't believe it's consistent with what we've heard this evening or with those two video snippets. I'd like to just make a final point, if I may, Mr. Chairman, with respect to. I'd like to just make a final point, if I may, Mr. Chairman, with respect to specification non-compliances. You may recall that when we were here two or three meetings ago to talk about the top coat paving plan, I think Mr. Hammer referred to it as the, I forget what term he gave it, but essentially it was intended as the remedial plan in a sense. It was both a top coat paving plan, but it was at least intended on the part of the applicants to remedy some of the uncontested shortfalls and non-specifications in the binder course, the that was put in in, I believe, November of twenty eighteen. The binder course compaction rates, everyone agreed at that time, were well below the ninety two point five percent standard. The the standard that applies to this roadway, as the board knows, and it's uncontested, is ninety five percent plus or minus two and a half, making ninety two point five the minimum passable standard on compaction. Sixty seven percent of the tests that were done on the binder course showed compaction below those values. They also were well short on thickness. And part of the idea of the top coat paving plan, which our engineers came in and and testified to the board, was insufficient to address these issues. But the logic at the time was, well, there's going to be additional asphalt put down on the top coat that will remedy some of the compaction problems. What you've seen in the latest set of John Turner Consulting test reports that that I submitted with my letter in February that were done in November of twenty twenty, the last work done on the roadway is, and this is the document that is it's in your packet, it's entitled, pull it up here. John Turner Consulting HMA Pavement Nuclear Density Test Report. It was the test results that I submitted with my February twenty sixth letter. And if you have that document in front of you, you'll see on the first two pages in the right hand, far right column. I can give you a minute to pull that up if you need it. You'll see values in red, which are all of the compaction values that were done after the top coat was put on, showing again a vast majority of the of the location samples falling below the ninety two point five. That's on the first two pages. So in other words, if the remedial top coat paving plan was intended to remedy some of the more serious binder course compaction shortfalls, it didn't succeed because the compaction rates are still below, thank you for putting that up, still below the the ninety two point five percent standard. That's a standard that everybody agrees is is the correct standard. Mr. Daring himself, the pavement consultant for Campbell's, wrote a letter that's in your packet dated July thirteenth where he says in pertinent part, "I found the John Turner reports to be very professional and thorough." And Mr. Daring admits that many of the compaction results are below the ninety two point five. So those numbers are supposed to mean something, ninety five plus or minus two and a half percent. Those numbers are supposed to mean something in terms of whether the road is in compliance. And it's clear that it isn't in compliance and it ought to be before the before the money is released. The final point I would make, Mr. Chairman, relates to Mr. Gill. I don't know if Mr. Gill is on is on the line or not, but whether he is or isn't, I think it'd be important to know whether Mr. Gill actually went out to the site in connection with his signing of the June eighth twenty twenty one letter by Mr. Hammer. As we've seen throughout the process, Mr. Hammer is is the project engineer, the lead engineer. But because he's not a registered professional engineer, Mr. Gill adds his stamp to to these letters. The June eighth letter is clearly prepared by Mr. Hammer. It talks about, for example, the slope and says things like slope stabilization is being established. That's, I don't know what that means. Apparently, that's, I guess, eventually gonna gonna bring the slopes within compliance, although it's unclear what that what that means and how that would occur. Mr. Starrett has relied a great deal on the fact that Mr. Gill put his stamp and signature on the certification, but I think the board would want to know directly from Mr. Gill, the one with the with the license, his observations and whether he physically, what he's physically observed since the time of the top coat paving. So for all those reasons, I think the board on the merits really should not release any of any of these funds because the deficiencies clearly are going to cost more to remedy than what's there. So just bringing it from forty thousand to zero is just going to exacerbate that problem. And then again, I think on process, it really is extremely unfair for a decisive judgment to be rendered tonight by the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timman. Okay, so I guess to just address a couple of questions. Jeff, was there anything with regard to the timing of this item reaching our packet that was not, you know, didn't adhere adhere to the town standards for submission of entry into a planning board packet?
What I can say, Mr. Chair, is my understanding is that the applicant's been working with the engineering department for probably several weeks. It did submit initial materials for review by that department. And I think this most recent correspondence was just addressing it specifically to the board, but they had submitted materials earlier for the engineering department to review before they did their most recent site inspections. And I guess I'd let Paul Starrett talk to that. I think the board certainly has a lot of discretion here.
Yeah.
Either way, so I guess I would suggest the board figure out how they want to approach this.
Yeah.
Give them a lot of discretion here.
Okay. Yeah, fair enough. All right. Okay. We had somebody else with their hand up. Hold on. I have to look at the participants.
Mr. Beers. Mr. Beers has a hand up.
Yep. So why don't we, why don't we go to him and address, address all raised hands before we deliberate further?
Hi, this is Aaron Spears. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Beers.
I'm at fifteen Lawson Road. On the infiltration trenches, I have severe concerns about their long-term viability for the fact that Mr. Starrett didn't answer the question as to whether they were being maintained. He answered the question that they're working okay now. But there's been no maintenance accomplished. According to the operation and maintenance plan, the underground thing that's connected to the catch basin is supposed to be observed once a year. It has never been looked at since this installation has been installed as the ports to inspect it were buried by the developer until we uncovered them at a cost. That's never been inspected to this date, as far as I know. We have observed the Campbell's two times in the last three years doing any maintenance along the edges of Hummingbird Lane. That is not under the requirement of the infiltration trench structural BMP best management practices under volume two, chapter two, pages ninety four to ninety seven, ninety four to ninety nine, which requires six month inspections during construction, one year thereafter, and after every heavy rain event. None of this has occurred. We live right next door. We could not have missed it. This hasn't happened. I don't know if this thing is registered, this O and M plan. I got a copy from Mr. Starrett. I have not been able to find it on the Registry of Deeds. If it's there, I'd like someone to tell me where it is because I haven't found it. So I don't even know if it's registered there. That's it.
So, Mr. Chair, I can say that the document I received, I got, that I shared with Mr. Beers came from Middle Section Authority Registry of Deeds and I provided Mr. Beers with the book and page number, which, you know, the Registry of Deeds is not the most friendly place for a layperson to get online and start looking at documents. Jeff Morris can attest to that. But your, the O and M plan has been recorded.
I have one other issue I should raise, and that has to do with the construction of the infiltration trenches under, again, that document from the state Commonwealth of Mass Infiltration Infiltration Trenches Best Management Practices. That trench is supposed to be three to seven feet deep, filled with two to five inch diameter stones. They placed those large stones over the existing trench that was no more than one foot deep. So I don't even know if that trench is constructed as it should be. I asked Mr. Starrett if there was any inspection documents or anything about that trench design, and he didn't respond to that question.
So, Mr. Chair, we provide you with a video this evening or two videos that show the trench performing as designed.
Yep.
That's currently, that's not long term. That's now today. Infiltration trenches, according to the same document from the state, have a high rate of failure if they are not maintained adequately. This trench, these trenches show no shine, no signs of being maintained adequately. They're doomed to long term failure.
So, Paul, is it your opinion, would it be appropriate for us to request copies of any maintenance records from the applicant here?
Yeah, you might, but you may also give the applicant an opportunity to speak tonight. As I don't know, there, it's a private road. So we we, I have gotten as a courtesy, I've gotten things like the invoice for getting the catch basins cleaned and whatnot, but I would, I would, I would point to the applicant and the the designer to speak to their maintenance practices.
Yeah.
I mean, if we see something, we say something. You know, inspection is a visual. So, you know, if, you know, we have a half a mile of, well, actually a mile because it's on both sides of our road here. We have the same stone swales here. We, at the highway department, we send the weed kids out with the weed whacker to summer help and clean it up, but that's just get grass from stop growing. But I would ask, you could ask the applicant about their maintenance habits.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Paul. Well, I see that Lindsay Campbell has her hand raised. So Sierra, if it's possible, maybe we can maybe we can add her to the discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mrs. Campbell.
Good evening, it's Ashley William Campbell.
Good evening, Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, I mean, we we have gone and we've cleaned it out. We submitted, as proved, actually, the catch basin had been cleaned out. We submitted the receipt of that work to Paul either today or Friday. And people are not home twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. We go out, we do it. And when we do do it, we get blatantly, you know, barrage specifically by Mr. Beers's wife. Without getting into details, I mean, this, there is a lot of fingers pointed at this road. I mean, at the end of the day, it is three houses, something, and a lot of people are concerned with.
I'm sorry, I accidentally, I accidentally muted, Mr. Campbell. Okay, you should be able to speak again. I'm sorry about that.
Well, we're
Just hold on. Sierra, for the sake of of maybe not having this, is it possible to only have one of the participants joined in as a panelist at once? So some of the folks who've had a chance to speak, can we move them back to being attendees? Is that possible?
Yes. So I was trying to to mute those who had already spoken, yes, and just clicked on the wrong person. So apologies for that.
All right. No, no problems. Okay, great. Mr. Campbell, continue, please.
No, that's okay. One thing I did want to bring up to the board's attention is that you know, with all the issues that there are with Hummingbird Lane and all of the neighbors that are so concerned with Hummingbird Lane, Westford's postmaster this past summer actually sent out a letter to the residents of Lawson Road informing them that if they did not enhance the roadway, that he was going to be stopping service to Lawson Road. To me, that that's a very telling thing that the postmaster is going to stop service based off of the condition of Lawson Road, yet we're spending all this time talking about Hummingbird Lane. I think the bigger picture really should be that people should be concerned with Lawson Road. And also to bring up to Bob's point, a lot of the issues that they talk about is drainage. That's not part of, that's not money that's held by the board currently. It's, it was approved. And essentially, the bond money that the board is holding of ours is for top coat installation. It was for landscaping. It was for gravel, and it was for a berm curb. I mean, this is kind of null and void. You know, we did this a year ago.
Yep.
Are there any questions you guys might have of us?
Let's go to the board. Kate or Bob, do you have any questions for the Campbells?
No, I don't. I just do want to respond to some comments from other people that I appreciate the emotions of the issue, I mean, of the issue or the the topic. But a lot of the material in our packet is, was provided previously, and I know that engineering has had the benefit of the concerns raised by others and the comments raised by others and that they take their job seriously and and would have reviewed all that. And I trust their professional, not opinions, but their professional evaluations. And if engineering is confident, then I'm confident with their recommendation. Over.
Thanks, Kate. Bob, any comments or questions from from your side?
No, I, I think they've been addressed. And I share the opinion that Kate just expressed. At the end of the day, I mean, I think we're trying to look at the pavement. I'm trusting Mr. Starrett's assessment for us. We are getting vastly different opinions from different consultants. But in the end of the day, I need to rely on Westford's town engineering staff to help me make the best assessment of the information presented before us here. So, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Yeah, no, I generally agree, and we do, we rely on town engineering's expertise. And I think in this case, the video was fairly compelling as well. You know, the only, I guess, discussion topics that I heard that I thought, you know, had some merit to them is, you know, one, did we want to continue this to August? So that there's more benefit of time, I guess, you know, to have the the engineer who actually stamped the plans available to offer their comment. Or, you know, two, just because we think it's it's fair to the, you know, the neighboring residents, given the, you know, the time with which the the submission was put in and its proximity to this meeting date. I mean, Jeff, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, I'm just looking at the schedule and, you know, I mean, do they need to meet for an application like this, the same application submittal deadline for the July nineteenth meeting that a, say, an applicant for a new subdivision would have to meet? Or is this a different case because it's a general business item?
So it is, there is some confusion here. So no, this is not like a typical public hearing process where we need a lot more advanced notice. What I do know is that the applicant did work with the engineering department for several weeks towards this process. They requested that this process move forward. However, we advised the applicant that it made no sense to proceed to the planning board up until they received a review by the engineering department. And so which came that was coming very recently. So there were no motives here. If the board feels more comfortable delaying, that's fine, but I think you have discretion either way.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that a delay is going to necessarily change the opinion of the board, but so I'm not just looking to, you know, push this along for for no reason.
No, and and I know through the whole process that the chair of the board has always been very generous. You've been generous. Darren was always generous. I hope I was always generous in giving neighbors a chance to speak and and have their say. A lot of this has been, has been discussed in great detail over the last few years. I don't, I'm with you, Bill, in that I'm not sure that delaying it another month would provide, have any real value. That the, it is a discussion item. It's not a public hearing. That the, it is a discussion item, it's not a public hearing. And, and staff has followed the requirements of making it available ahead of time. Maybe not two weeks, but it was available more than two days in advance, which is the requirement.
Right.
So, I, I have no concerns about making a decision tonight.
Yep.
Yeah. If I may, Paul Starrett, town engineer, just for clarification to the board, this is not, you're not relieving the developer or heirs or future owners any relief at all from being required to do the O and M, to maintain the system as it was designed. And anytime there is a violation of the permit that you issued, you, you don't, you don't need a bond to assure you to enforce. So that, you're not giving that up by any stretch, and the neighbors are not losing your powers and authorities to enforce the permit that you've issued.
And we're, and we, we can only make our decision based on the current condition of it. Some people claim that down the road, it won't be maintained, but that's not part of this deliberation. And as Paul just mentioned, if it isn't properly maintained, then the people do have recourse at that point for, for the future. But the future is not what we're discussing now.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you know, seeing two videos of proof of performance, knowing that town staff has gone on multiple occasions during rain events and, and honestly, the rain, I mean, Paul, knowing you were out there recently, the rain events recently have been as, as heavy as they've been, you know, in this calendar year anyway. So, I'm not sure, you know, we can sit around and wait for the 100-year storm event to try to see what would happen if, you know, just massive amounts of rain are landing all at once. It's, it's been raining pretty, it's one of the wettest Julys on record. I, I think we have a, you know, if you guys have been out there in the last several weeks, I think we have a pretty good indication of how the road is, to Kate's point, performing right now with regard to handling stormwater, so.
To that point, Mr. Chair, we should mention that the, the planning board does not require the developer to design best management practices to accommodate every rain event or a melting snow from a blizzard. So, there will be, you know, a, a two-inch rainstorm in a half hour that's of biblical proportions that, that will be flooding over the entire town. So, it, it, it's not, no one has given anyone any insurance, assurances that there's not going to be stormwater runoff in New England now or any time in the future. But you have captured a certain amount of the storms typically that will be addressed. But, you know, there are still going to be events that there will be flooding and all over town. Just can't, you can't, you can't have a 24-foot-wide drain pipe to accommodate every storm. Just, just to be clear about that.
Yep. Okay.
So, you know, we can sit here and talk about the drainage, we can talk about the infiltration system. But I think what we're really trying to talk about here is the quality of the install of the pavement. So, the only last question I really had here was really to Mr., to Paul Starrett to help us navigate through the different reports that we saw, especially relative to the compaction rates on the pavement following the latest install. Is there anything you can offer, Paul, regarding that? Because I think we've seen two vastly different opinions this evening from the applicant versus the abutter.
Correct. And, and each of them had, we had our own inspector on site. I was there myself, didn't have any observations. The inspectors had no comments to me, the three of us chatted multiple times throughout the day. I'm not sure that I have ever, in my professional life, ever seen a paving project that was more scrutinized. I had more eyes on it, and there was nothing that I saw that was outside of any industrial standards for the installation of pavement.
Well, with regard to the compaction, Bob, I was, I was looking at those compaction rate numbers when they were up on the screen. And, and while a number of them don't get to 92.5, and I'm basing this purely on recalling what they were prior to the top coat going on. They seem like they've certainly come up from where some of them are. I seem to recall some of them being in the upper 80s and a lot more in the lower 90s. And on the, what's in our packet tonight, a number of those, of those locations are off by point one or point two. You know, you're, you're looking at a lot of 90, 92.3s, 92.4s in there, I think, right? There's, so, you know, I remember at the time when we were talking about the, the relative compaction rates back before this top coat was, was put on and the conversation around putting on the top coat. I don't think the only objective of, of the top coat was to get better compaction of the subsurface. I think I recall we were putting on a slightly thicker top course as well to somewhat accommodate for slightly less compaction underneath. Paul, is, is my recollection right there?
Yes, correct. Yeah, and that, that was, that was from, yes, that's exactly what happened.
Yeah. So, I don't, I, I don't have the recollection that the objective of the top course paving was to address, I think, I think we knew it wasn't going to fully address the undercoat compaction rate. And what we did is we agreed, okay, we were going to put a slightly thicker top course on to, you know, I guess, address what would be, I think, generally considered minimal deviation from the standard.
Correct. That was the shim coat, which we did have pictures of being applied in the handout.
Right.
So, so, yeah. And, and I think, I'm not sure if it was, who said, maybe it was Paul that just said, you know, we haven't seen a road go through this scrutiny, this is a common driveway.
Right. And, and I remember that conversation a lot, Bob, at that time as well. We were talking about, you know, these road standards are meant for a larger variety of roads. And on the, the span of roads that these standards cover, this road from a amount of use that we'll see on a daily or weekly basis is definitely on the lower end of the spectrum in terms of number of trips, things like that. So, with three houses on it.
The DOT standard that the regulation points to applies to Route 495 as well. I mean, that's, you know, that's the comparison you're making that, Dylan, is that, you know, that's, that's certainly not the expectation that you're going to see 2,000 vehicles an hour for seven years going up and down.
Well, yeah, Hummingbird Lane, yeah. I don't, I don't suspect that to be the case.
But, so I'm not aware of anything in the pavement that is, is going to show deficiency. I don't know that the planning board is in the business of issuing warranties and guarantees on work by others anyway. But, you know, we don't, you know, I, there's nothing that I saw, witnessed, or have seen that give me any pause or concern for any of the residents that live on or use Hummingbird Lane.
Okay. Well, if as a board we've deliberated this point here, I would propose that we, we move this forward. And we do have some other folks obviously waiting for general business item C. So, unless we have anything else to discuss, shall we move on?
I, I would, I would move that we release, gosh, we have the one from previous.
It's the remain, the remaining bond for stations 2 plus 2.5 to stations 6 plus 0.0.
Okay, yeah. In the amount of $42,949.68 plus any accrued interest for Hummingbird Lane. And that it be refunded to, I assume it was the Campbells who posted it.
So, a friendly amendment, I believe the amount, Kate, that was shown here on the final bond release now on the screen is $43,007.14 plus any accrued interest.
Friendly motion accepted. I was looking at the old one.
Yeah, the old form, I realize that.
So, yes.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to release the amount here on the screen, $43,007.14 plus any accrued interest to the Campbells. And we have a second. All those in favor? Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I say aye. Okay. All right, thank you. And good luck to everyone on Lawson and Hummingbird. All right. Mike will be rejoining us and we'll move on to general business item C, which is a request to authorize administrative review and approval for a change in use from retail sales to general pub, oh, to the general public, to business or professional office at 432 and 434 Littleton Road. Is the applicant with us?
Believe they are. Attorney Melissa Robbins?
All right, I'm muted. Good evening, members of the board. Attorney Melissa Robbins from Law from Afaro Robbins here tonight representing Meadow Brook Investment LLC, excuse me. Mr. Chair, can I just give a brief overview?
Please.
So, we're here tonight for a request for administrative site plan review. The administrative site plan review is for the property located at 432 and 434 Littleton Road. But as you can see, it is specific to the shed only. This shed is 260 square feet in size. We're requesting no structural changes of any type. We're requesting no inside changes of any type. We're not making any parking changes, nor are we making any landscape changes. The only change from the outside of the structure will be a sign. The change in use is from a retail use, it was used for antique sales, and now it will be for business use. The business use is actually a less intense use, so it requires less parking. This particular commercial use is actually for a credit card business that processes online credit card sales. So, there is actually no clients at all that come to the site for this business. There's a total of two employees. And just so the board knows, regardless if it's retail or if it's a business use, it requires 200 square feet per floor area. So, it doesn't actually change the parking requirements at all, even though the use itself will be less intense. The building inspector has looked at this and has suggested that this gets administrative site plan review since it is a change in use, it does trigger the requirement for site plan review. So, I'm here tonight just requiring, requesting, excuse me, administrative site plan review since the change is so minor. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Great, thank you. All right, Bob, we'll go to you first. Do you have any questions on this application?
No, the only question I had was had to do with the setback. I didn't see a site plan. I'm assuming this shed looks like it had a variance. Does it meet the setbacks?
It's actually original, a portion of the shed is original to the structure and it was built in 1930. So, a lot of the structure and the parking related to it is pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay, that's fine, just want to make sure of that. And the other question I just had was, you know, never having paid attention to it before, what health and safety systems are in there? Does it include a smoke fire detector?
It has all normal requirements for an occupied structure. Mr. Fontaine's only issue was as to the change in use itself, that it required action of this planning board in order to proceed. And then it also requires a sign permit for the sign itself.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm good, Dylan, thank you.
Okay, great. Kate, any questions?
No, I read the material in the packet and I, I have no questions.
Okay. Mike?
Nope, good.
Yep. And I am as well. All right. So, given that, oh, hang on, now I have too many things open. Is there a motion for PB 2132 to authorize administrative review and approval for this change in use?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I also say aye.
Thank you very much, members of the board. I appreciate your time.
Yep, good luck to the applicant.
It's a cute shed.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. General business, we are on to our last general business topic, item D, Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we thought we would take this opportunity to just start to expose you to some of the recent changes to the zoning act. So, in your packet tonight are some, what we feel to be relevant portions with some highlights. And actually, let's see. Not that page, there's another page. Let's see, maybe it's S 58 out of 172, rather. There's something I would like to call the board's attention to. It's got a bunch of highlight on the right side, oh, might be, might be 143 in the packet. So, believe it or not, Westford is considered an MBTA community. And so, one of the things that now applies to us is that they say that an MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as a right. So, obviously, we do not have this. And there are some repercussions if we do not have that, once they start enforcing these matters, which we have no idea when that will actually be. And we are awaiting additional guidance. But we just wanted to bring it to your attention. And it does say that one of the things in MBTA community that fails to do that, they will no longer be eligible for certain funds from, say, Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Projects Fund, and Mass Works Infrastructure Program. So, what we would like to do and is to gather some of the information about what exactly has the town avail themselves of from these funds in the past. So, you get a sense of how relevant or important that might be to come into compliance and to see if the town was thinking of applying for these types of funds. So, you get maybe a sense of urgency or not. Because it does make sense to at least start to think about this because there's a, a number of ways to try to check some of these boxes if, if the town or this board is willing to pursue it. One of the other big picture things is that certain zoning bylaw amendments, you may be familiar because of the recent Merrill's Quarry Town Meeting article, certain zoning bylaw amendments that might provide for, say, higher density developments, things that are consistent with the goals and purposes of these amendments, it might only require a simple majority vote as compared to a two-thirds majority vote. And in some cases, some approvals by a board, even though it might be a special permit approval, normally requiring a supermajority or four-fifths, sometimes that might also be by a simple majority vote of the Special Permit Granting Authority if it aligns with specific guidelines. So, we're not trying to provide a big overview tonight. We think this makes sense, you have some time to look it over. I think it would be more productive when we are meeting face-to-face with the full board complement and to raise some awareness and see if the board is interested in pursuing ways to address some of the things that are, that are called out here. So, we just want to introduce it to you tonight and we'll bring it back in, in more detail.
Thank you.
So, I have a question, Jeff. Reading Section 3A of Section, subsection 3A of Section 18 with respect to an MBTA community, I do see the requirement for multifamily housing. But the, the issue I have is I don't think we have within town a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station. And a bus station, I would think, is different from a bus stop. So, what do we do here? Does this mean we have to construct such a commuter station in order to be compliant?
No, that's not my limited understanding. What it says is certain communities that you expect would be MBTA communities by virtue of having some of that infrastructure or facilities. However, the state also said, in addition to those, we also have this other list of communities that we're going to say are MBTA communities. And Westford falls into that second group. So, even though we may not have some of that infrastructure or systems in place, we're still considered an MBTA community. And so, the provisions that apply to an MBTA community would apply to us. If that makes sense.
Is that because of our proximity to two MBTA communities?
One would, that would be my reason to guess.
Plus, we do have limited service, right? The bus comes to, to what?
Plus, we do have limited service, right? The bus comes to West.
Yeah, we do have, we do have a, you know, a bus route. We're not so far from other towns that do have that. And so maybe they didn't want to do a hard and fast, you know, cutoff. Knowing, I mean, we were involved at one point in, you know, some crosstown connect and other programs that were intended to facilitate access to other locations. So maybe things like that.
Jeff, this seems to be somewhat similar to that presentation we had maybe a year or so ago. Do you recall talking about the different, different tools we can use?
So, yep, there was a presentation by DHCD, I believe, about starter homes. Maybe that's what you're thinking of?
Maybe, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There are some scary numbers here, maybe where you see 15 units per acre. But again, there's a caveat there. As you know, Westford, by and large, we don't have, we don't have any municipal sewer, with some minor exceptions. And so it says 15 units per acre, however, that's subject to further limitations imposed by Wetlands Protection Act or Title V. So you could potentially, for some tracts of land, say you get 15 units per acre, but they still have to be able to service it with all the utilities and infrastructure like, like septic, so. So it's a scary number, but.
Okay, I guess I'm still coming back to maybe we need to talk to town council here because I see the requirement here that we must have a district that includes a multifamily, minimum 15 units per acre, and that that district must be located no more than half a mile from a commuting station. And I don't know, we have no such thing. It, it doesn't say a bus route. It actually says a bus station, subway station, rail station.
Yep, understood. I mean, I don't think we can be attacked for being out of compliance with something that's physically impossible to meet. But we expect details like this would come up when they promulgate additional guidelines, which we don't, we don't have benefit of yet. But all I'm saying is, we're, we're trying to bring it to your attention, now that we're past town meeting, and say, hey, when you're thinking of, you know, your goals over the next year or two, you know, I, I don't think we can put our heads in the sand here. I think we have to see, you know, factor that into your work plan, is all I'm suggesting.
Yep. Early awareness is always welcome. Thank you, Jeff.
I mean, we only have a few districts in town. I, I see this as where we have the renovated mills, maybe. And where we have Bell of Westford. I mean, that's about the only areas where we seem to be compliant.
Yeah, I think maybe we should have a, it might be worthwhile to have a, a special discussion focused on that if there are some areas, because there are, it might make sense to drum up some of the master plan and the housing production plan because I think they actually point to some specific parcels of land that should be considered for either zoning changes or higher density developments or affordable housing. And maybe that could be a way to check, you know, multiple boxes while the town has a lot of control. But it's going to be a longer conversation.
Yeah. Half kidding, maybe we could put a forge, we can put the Forge Pond ferry in and we could satisfy the compliance with the mill. But I don't know, yeah, this is, this is a challenge with the, the, the terminal. But I think it does highlight that we don't have good commuting service necessarily in Westford at this time.
Yeah, my, my thoughts on this, thank you, Jeff. It's a lot of dense reading in legalese that is very difficult to read even two or three times and think you understand what the heck they're saying. So I, this is definitely worth spending time reviewing. I, I think if the town does have funds for it, or if our contract with town council still allows it, I think this would be a time to request that town council does meet with us to talk about all of these changes and the effect on our zoning bylaws and potential updates that are, will be required for us to think about. One of the things that I did notice in here that a lot of it pertained to 40R, which is the multi-use and such. And a question could be or would be that if we pursue designating maybe 110 or something like that as a 40R district, would that comply with this multi-housing, with the, the multiple housing requirement there? I had other questions in here, like that you mentioned. Certain zoning bylaw changes only require a majority of vote from town meeting instead of a supermajority. But then I thought I also read something that if the owners of, at least of more than 50% of the land within 300 feet of the area with the proposed change contested that it would still need the two-thirds vote at, at town meeting. So I want to make sure I understood that correctly. So we'll definitely have to spend more time thinking about this. Over.
Agreed. So Jeff, I mean, we'll look to get this on to a meeting agenda at some point in the future when town council maybe is available and we've had some further time to consider this. And also the agenda is, you know, maybe appropriately lighter so that we can have, you know, some time to actually dig into this topic?
Yeah, I think that makes good sense.
Fantastic. Okay, great. If there's nothing else on chapter 358 from the Acts of 2020, then all we have left is a couple of meeting minutes.
Can I, wait a minute, I'm not done yet. I have one other question for Jeff to research because I've just pulled up chapter ones. I'm, I'm in 161A. And we might have, we might be excluded. The 51 cities and towns does not include Westford. The other served communities definition is what Westford is included under.
Yep, we'll, we will ask council to go over that in detail with us. But we know, we know from some of our recent interactions because of the Merrill's Quarry proposal that, well, it's, it's complicated. It, and there seemed to be a lot of nuances and some exceptions and maybe some lack of clarity. And that's why we anticipate receipt of additional governing documents and guidelines, so. We'll work.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'd just be, I'd be curious, Jeff, if they could let us know under the definition of MBTA community, which phrase applies to us?
Okay.
And that's on page 56 of 172 of the chapter that you provided to us tonight.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All set now, Bob?
Yeah, I'm all set now. That's my, my.
Great. Okay. So then the next item on our agenda is to review the minutes, and we have two of them. The first is the meeting minutes from June 7th of 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Again.
Okay, any discussion?
I did, page 155 in the packet, which is page four of the minutes, lines 185 and 186. If you're down there.
Yep.
So on line 185, it had the board voted for 1-0. And there should be a paren that states Hollister opposed. Because we usually state who opposed or abstained. And then, and then on the next line, it says we voted to revise the recommendation. And I would like to change that to revise and reaffirm their recommendation so that people understand that my vote was really against the reaffirmation part of it. Because that's what the vote was, that we revised it just to add the proposed modifications by the applicant or petitioner. And then you guys then voted again that you would still support it. So change revise to revise and reaffirm, over.
We have those edits? Yep.
Yes.
Any other comments on the June 7th minutes?
Yeah, just in that area. Did, did Angela specifically state we had to report our vote for Article 18? Or was it for all the articles that we listed above as planning board articles?
I don't recall.
She, oh, wait a minute.
She did, she did seem to, I mean, I, I seem to recall her focusing on Article 18.
But it was all of them.
Yeah, I would think it was all, yeah, I thought.
It was all of them. It was for all of the.
Yeah, but she was more asking, she was more asking who it was that was going to be presenting it, I felt like. I feel like it was, we knew that we were going to present something. It was a question of the who was delivering it, I thought.
That's my recollection.
Oh. I could be mistaken, but I, I thought she might have indicated it would have to be a planning board member because in case there was either a question or if he had to make a, a motion to amend or something, you needed to be a resident?
Yep.
Okay. Might want to just put a little more detail in there on, on that.
Well, I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's inaccurate. I, I think that's kind of what she may have said.
Okay, all right.
Any other comments on the June 7th minutes?
Nope.
No.
No.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Oh, oh, I did have something. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, can we go back? It was on page five, line 215. This is just a, it said the board discussed the letter included in the packet and agreed that engineering would review and follow up. And maybe just what was the letter about? It, the board discussed the letter, blah, 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 that described blah, 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 blah. Because I don't, reading this, you don't know what it is.
There's no context.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. I almost want to say it might have been about a project you discussed earlier this evening.
Yes, about correspondence on their line 346 lists what the correspondence were.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just so the people would know what engineering department was going to follow up on.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Clear to move on?
Move on.
Yep.
All right, great. So then we have the June 21st meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion on the June 21st meetings, meeting minutes?
Yes, yes. On line 84, where it says I initiated a discussion regarding the senior mod overlay district that failed. I did, I initiated the discussion in response to the letter in our packets from Mr. Bill Harmon. And I just think that context should be added. And that's when I proceeded to explain my, my phone call with Mr. Harmon and what we discussed regarding the challenges that the Merrill's Quarry site was presenting us in terms of finding an acceptable means of development while addressing safety.
But Bob, just to clarify, so are you just suggesting in response to email correspondence from Bill Harmon? Chapter initiated, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's what I want.
Any other comments on the minutes?
No.
Nope.
I'm good as well. So seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from June 21st, say aye. Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you.
Brings us to correspondence reports and updates. And we received a letter from Mass Audubon.
And this letter is really more appropriate for, I think, like our new, whatever our new committee is dealing with energy and carbon and such. This is more their purview and, and good luck. I don't think we have 3,000 to 5,000 acres in town that qualify for this. So it's, it's an interesting thing, but not necessarily appropriate for Westford.
We need a carbon market where we can buy more carbon.
I'll give you my wood ash.
It was interesting, anyway. All right. Well, if, and nobody has anything further, we could entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. I hope you all have a good few weeks before our August meeting.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, just FYI, the Sox are up 12-4. It was eight-nothing at one inning.
Wow.
Nice.
Yeah.
I'll let, I'll let Pete know. Bye, everybody.
Have a good.
Good, good meeting, guys. Hey, thanks. Have a, have a good month of July.
You as well. Take care. Bye-bye.